The April 26th City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Reverend Dr. Brandon Harris, Pastor of Avondale United Methodist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all will please stand.
Please join me in prayer. God of power and might, wisdom and justice. Through you, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your Spirit of guidance and fortitude the members of this council, our mayor, other elected leaders in this city, and all who are in positions of public trust in our community and in every community. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant that they may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our city with honesty and integrity. Give them voices of compassion for the hurting, hands of justice for the oppressed and for those who live on the margins, and a spirit of creativity and cooperation for the challenges and opportunities facing their neighbors. As this body wrestles with the agenda before it today, open its ears to the voices of citizens and colleagues who will speak. Enliven those words spoken and heard with grace and truth. During the deliberations and debates of this evening, give this council and all of us an assurance of what would please you and a determination to bring that awareness together with a concern for the benefit of all citizens of Birmingham. May we always seek the benediction of this city by investing ourselves in the lives of those around us. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Call and roll, Mr. Clerk.
Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Lundey.
Here.
Councilmember Parker. Councilmember Rafferty. President Proten Ropes.
Good evening, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening, sir. Councilmember Skell. Councilmember Tyson.
Good evening.
President Austin.
President, good evening, Mr. Clerk. The minutes are not ready from February 9th through April 19th. We're gonna move and have communications from the mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, good evening, I'm sorry. Good evening. And good evening to our audience. Mr. President, as you know, for some time now, we've been working on plans to really bring back the Pratt community, not just to the level that it was, but to a higher level that will incorporate both architectural structures as well as rebuilding homes to give a sense of place and to bring economic activity. Today, I'm pleased to announce that we are here to present to you Mr. Tom Leader, who is the outstanding architect that was the brains behind the team that put together Railroad Park, to come forward and share with us the plans to developing linear park in the Pratt City community. And this is not just a park for the sake of having a park, but we expect economic development activity to be centered around the creation of this linear park that will take place. At this time, I'd like to have the head of my community development office introduce Tom. John?
Good evening, everyone. John Cologne, Director of Community Development. I'd just like to say that this is a really exciting endeavor for us. Pratt has been through a lot. Pratt also means a lot to not just the citizens of that community, but also to the city as a whole. It's a historic neighborhood, in fact, that predates Birmingham itself. And so being part of this project is something that we're very excited about. And because of that, we put out an RFP for the brightest minds to come together to really start to build a vision for the future of Pratt. Not only what Pratt is going to really start to look like and mean to the residents, but also what it's gonna mean to the rest of the community. So with that said, I wanna bring forward the lead architect in the project, Mr. Tom Leader.
Hi, I'm Tom Leader, and I still recognize some of you from days working on Railroad Park. And that's how we got to know the place. And we're joined on the team we're putting together here for Pratt City with Leanne McNally, landscape architect, Marshall Anderson, design initiative architect, and Kristen Jeffers, who works with media and civic engagement. And we are shepherded along by Matt McTernock, project manager for community and development. Well, anyway, I just wanna say, you know, it's our first trip, our first workshop. And what we find when we go to sit down with people for the first time today is that there's a really great group of people, they're very enthusiastic, very energized, and ready to go. And a lot of good work's been done, and there's gonna be more work to come that will then be realized, hopefully sometime within 2017. One of the most important things that we've already heard is that people are ready to have a place to gather, have a place to get together, a place to cross paths with each other, and a place where events can happen, where it is really kind of the civic living room. Railroad Park was also a civic living room for the whole city. I think Pratt is looking for a place to have its own living room, its own place which is part-part, you know, part-building, just the way Railroad Park was, that same combination, but something that is very programmable. And one of the important things about the people we met today is that we wanna recruit them. We wanna recruit them to become part of the team for the next two, three, four years. And I say to people sometimes, you know, designing and building a park doesn't really, you know, worry us. We know we can do that, we've done it before. The hard part, or some of the most interesting parts about it, organizing everybody, getting together, everybody to create a group which will propel things forward from an operational standpoint. Because we need people to fund, to make that their home for their events, their parties, their gatherings, and we need to organize the programming all through the year, the way you see happening at Railroad Park all the time. That takes planning and kind of operational engineering and real focus on how to make things go. It involves the entire community as players in that. That's gonna be the real test of success here, with the outcome of it.
Tom, and Council, you know, when we started out, we intentionally had our neighborhood leadership as well as the citizens in particular to be an instrumental part of looking at what the possibilities were for that area. We didn't want something to happen because City Hall wanted it to happen. We wanted to make sure that the neighborhood had the input into this process. And we have with us this evening Ms. Ellen Spencer, the community president, who has been a vital part of this process from day one. The team that you see before you will work with the neighborhoods through Ms. Spencer and the other presidents in that area to make sure that it reflects the desires of the community itself. Ms. Spencer, would you like, President, would you like some words?
To the mayor, thank you, Council, President Austin, all of the council members, thank you. Pratt City is a great place to live. And we are excited about the growth that we are about to embark upon, the development, the park. We're also excited about the houses that's gonna come also to Pratt City. So we are looking forward to this development. So the only thing I can say is, let's get started.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Abbott?
I just wanted to say that I heard the program on NPR talking about Pratt today. A lot of people were interviewed, and it was very positive. And it's just so nice to hear positive accolades about things that we're getting ready to embark on. So I just wanted to say, I'm not sure quite how they got in the mix, but it was a great time.
Councilwoman Hoyt?
Yes, to Mr. Leader. Could you tell me, conceshually, what would be different in this park than what we've experienced in Railroad Park? And how engaging would it be?
Yeah, I think there will be a certain number of things that probably wouldn't be common. And we, on Railroad Park, and I think here too, we feel like making a place for people to get together is important, and that requires areas that are paved, shade, shelter for comfort, some presence of nature, some presence possibly of water, use of storm water to create features that are sustainable. And I think here, we're going to be particularly focused on the programming of events and kinds of things that will happen. Before we finished the design on Railroad Park, we had a general idea, different kinds of events we wanted to happen, performance and stuff. But we wanna get much more tightly focused on the scale of these things, their operational needs, servicing needs, utilities and so forth, so that it's really ready to go, doesn't need to be retrofitted afterwards if you decide you wanna have a concert for 2,000 people, or you wanna have a 20-person poetry meeting, that all the scales are really accommodated from small to medium to large to extra large. It's a, it's a good size park, that's half the size, a little less than half the size of Railroad Park. But we feel fully capable of really hosting the whole community and people from around for things like a festival. We also, you know, Railroad Park, we didn't have a community living right there at the time. It was more about, there's nobody living here right now, and hopefully it will be built as people will come. And it was well calculated, and so that worked. But here, we've got a whole family of people that really feel ownership here. So we need, we're joining their family right from the very start in a more personal way. And we're gonna be talking and engaging them in a much more direct way in terms of a very important operational side. I don't know if I answered the question.
Thank you, dear. Thanks. Councilor, Mr. Proten?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor, for bringing this forth today, and to the architects and all those involved, Madam President for Pratt City Neighborhood. As we know, all that transpired five years ago in that area. Devastation took place, and it was truly a catastrophic event for that community, that part of Birmingham. In the design process, I'm not sure if this preliminary or not, in the design process, have you already discussed storm shelters, safety, things of that nature in the design of this park?
That's been a part of, even from our original proposal to the city, when we were looking at the project and we wanted to do this project, is looking at the resiliency of whatever we do, whatever this project becomes, is looking at how resilient it is for the future and for the community, and how it can benefit the community in ways just beyond having a place together, but a place of safety as well. So that's one of the things that we're definitely going to be looking at. I just wanted to remind everybody, if they haven't seen the emails or the posters or anything yet, is that tomorrow, we met with the neighborhood leaders today, we had a community walk, which was well-attended, but we're gonna get into the programming tomorrow, where we really wanna hear from the community and from anyone that wants to use the space. So we will be at the Pratt City Library from 1:00 to 8:00 tomorrow. It is an open house, come as you go. We wanna hear any and all thoughts on what you want to see in this new civic space for Pratt. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sir, can you come up to the podium for me? How are you?
I'm doing great, you?
Wonderful. Thank you for asking. I wanted to know how much involvement has the Petrie Council, which is Councilor Lundey? How involved have you, you all included, Mr. Lundey, or Councilor Lundey, in this process?
Maybe, man, we're just here on our first trip.
Sure, I understand.
I'll be happy to answer that. Matt Ternock, Community Development. Councilor Lundey has been involved from the very get-go of this project. In fact, as we anticipated the programming of this, we made his office more than aware of the events that we've become in Pratt community.
So in other words, the tour that you all took today, Councilor Lundey was a part of that?
He was not a part of that, but he was certainly invited to that opportunity.
Okay. So I asked, and I'm just trying to find out, 'cause the one thing that we don't wanna have is that Pratt City is long overdue or an overhome. And so I just thought it would behoove all of us to make sure that the council member who represents the district, I know how protective I am with my district, that I would like to see that particular council member involved in the process. And maybe he can speak about that himself. I just wanted to make sure that he was involved. I'm certainly delighted that anything that's innovative and new gets over to Pratt City for more reasons than one. I know that tomorrow's going to be the fifth anniversary of what was so catastrophic to that community, and we just don't need to continue to talk about the devastation. We wanna see some improvement, major improvements. So again, Mr. Lundey can be able to speak to that. I just wanted to ask you personally, was he involved on every level of what's being manifested over there in Pratt City?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Tyson?
Thank you, President. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to know, have y'all set a plan on the upkeep?
Bring the microphone closer to you.
The upkeep of the park, because I know the parking wreck struck us so bad with funding, ways to even fund the local parks that we have, and a park this big, have y'all discussed a board on how you're gonna fund it for the repairs? Because Railroad Park can barely raise money to repair their park, the park that's at Railroad Park. And I know it's a private, it's separate from the city, but have y'all discussed that on the upkeep?
As Tom mentioned before, this is our first team meeting, and boots on the ground of everybody being here. So we kick it off today with the community leaders and in the community, and tomorrow we kick it off with the city, talking to all the departments, because the first thing that we wanna do before we program any spaces is knowing what the capabilities are for the long-term maintenance and operations. So that's one of the things that we'll try to understand from the get-go as we move forward in the process.
You know, I would just add to that, that we're always looking for opportunities on this kind of project to find ways to generate revenue for the operations, because generally it's easy comparatively to raise capital to build it, because it's exciting. But it's not as exciting to provide money to keep the thing up. And for example, Railroad Park, you know, it takes a huge effort to assemble as much money it takes to maintain it and operate here, but it's going now, it's working well. It takes organizational finesse, and it takes funding which can come from revenue we get from the park. For example, rentals for events, for concessions, for other kinds of services that could help the place pay for itself. And that's gotta be an important component, that it just doesn't wait to receive money from some other place altogether.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Thank you to the team, and to Ms. Spencer, thank you, and the neighborhood leadership.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
All right.
Mr. President, I wanna thank the mayor, the Community Development Department, for the work they've done to find funding, community block rent, development funding to help support the revitalization and bringing back of the Hillman community after the December 25th tornado. That funding that John Cologne, his team found, and the Community Development Department will bring back a better quality of life for the citizens in southwest Birmingham. And the announcement the other day, I thought, was outstanding, very well received by the citizens in that area, to the tune of $800,000 for those that need support to get their houses back in order after that tornado and devastation that took place in Hillman Station Neighborhood. So I'm just, I was elated, Mayor, I wanna thank you, your leadership, thank your Community Development Department for their leadership, and the team they were able to help find that CB DG funding, federal funding, and grants to help support those citizens in need. And hopefully we'll bring it back bigger and better than what it was before. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. President?
Go ahead, Councilor.
To that point, you know, I'm always about accountability. Is there gonna be a report? Because I think there was some public and private dollars that were collected. And the only reason I raised this issue because someone stopped me the other week and said that they had not received anything with respect to making some minor repairs, what have you. And so I know that was a nonprofit that we directed money to, and I'd like to see some kind of update on those dollars and who got the dollars.
These are the only funds that the city has put into this, the $800,000, and they have not been expended yet. We just announced it last week. The other dollars came, I think some funds came from the county, some funds came from...
Alamo Power and those other funds.
Yes, yes, and that came through the church that's out there. I do know that the council for that district, Council Robertson, has been working to raise money over there and with the church, and, but the funds that we're talking about have not been allocated yet. There is a process, and I think that we have someone at the church from...
Even from our original proposal to the city, when we were looking at the project and we wanted to do this project, is looking at the resiliency of whatever we do, whatever this project becomes, is looking at how resilient it is for the future and for the community, and how it can benefit the community in ways just beyond having a place together, but a place of safety as well. So that's one of the things that we're definitely going to be looking at. I just wanted to remind everybody, if they haven't seen the emails or the posters or anything yet, is that tomorrow, we met with the neighborhood leaders today, we had a community walk, which was well-attended, but we're gonna get into the programming tomorrow, where we really wanna hear from the community and from anyone that wants to use the space. So we will be at the Pratt City Library from 1:00 to 8:00 tomorrow. It is an open house, come as you go. We wanna hear any and all thoughts on what you want to see in this new civic space for Pratt. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Sir, can you come up to the podium for me? How are you?
I'm doing great, you?
Wonderful. Thank you for asking. I wanted to know how much involvement has the Petrie Council, which is Councilor Lundey? How involved have you, you all included, Mr. Lundey, or Councilor Lundey, in this process?
Maybe, man, we're just here on our first trip.
Sure, I understand.
I'll be happy to answer that. Matt Ternock, Community Development. Councilor Lundey has been involved from the very get-go of this project. In fact, as we anticipated the programming of this, we made his office more than aware of the events that we've become in Pratt community.
So in other words, the tour that you all took today, Councilor Lundey was a part of that?
He was not a part of that, but he was certainly invited to that opportunity.
Okay. So I asked, and I'm just trying to find out, 'cause the one thing that we don't wanna have is that Pratt City is long overdue or an overhome. And so I just thought it would behoove all of us to make sure that the council member who represents the district, I know how protective I am with my district, that I would like to see that particular council member involved in the process. And maybe he can speak about that himself. I just wanted to make sure that he was involved. I'm certainly delighted that anything that's innovative and new gets over to Pratt City for more reasons than one. I know that tomorrow's going to be the fifth anniversary of what was so catastrophic to that community, and we just don't need to continue to talk about the devastation. We wanna see some improvement, major improvements. So again, Mr. Lundey can be able to speak to that. I just wanted to ask you personally, was he involved on every level of what's being manifested over there in Pratt City? Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Tyson?
Thank you, President. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to know, have y'all set a plan on the upkeep?
Bring the microphone closer to you.
The upkeep of the park, because I know the parking wreck struck us so bad with funding, ways to even fund the local parks that we have, and a park this big, have y'all discussed a board on how you're gonna fund it for the repairs? Because Railroad Park can barely raise money to repair their park, the park that's at Railroad Park. And I know it's a private, it's separate from the city, but have y'all discussed that on the upkeep?
As Tom mentioned before, this is our first team meeting, and boots on the ground of everybody being here. So we kick it off today with the community leaders and in the community, and tomorrow we kick it off with the city, talking to all the departments, because the first thing that we wanna do before we program any spaces is knowing what the capabilities are for the long-term maintenance and operations. So that's one of the things that we'll try to understand from the get-go as we move forward in the process.
You know, I would just add to that, that we're always looking for opportunities on this kind of project to find ways to generate revenue for the operations, because generally it's easy comparatively to raise capital to build it, because it's exciting. But it's not as exciting to provide money to keep the thing up. And for example, Railroad Park, you know, it takes a huge effort to assemble as much money it takes to maintain it and operate here, but it's going now, it's working well. It takes organizational finesse, and it takes funding which can come from revenue we get from the park. For example, rentals for events, for concessions, for other kinds of services that could help the place pay for itself. And that's gotta be an important component, that it just doesn't wait to receive money from some other place altogether.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Thank you to the team, and to Ms. Spencer, thank you, and the neighborhood leadership.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. President.
All right.
Mr. President, I wanna thank the mayor, the Community Development Department, for the work they've done to find funding, community block rent, development funding to help support the revitalization and bringing back of the Hillman community after the December 25th tornado. That funding that John Cologne, his team found, and the Community Development Department will bring back a better quality of life for the citizens in southwest Birmingham. And the announcement the other day, I thought, was outstanding, very well received by the citizens in that area, to the tune of $800,000 for those that need support to get their houses back in order after that tornado and devastation that took place in Hillman Station Neighborhood. So I'm just, I was elated, Mayor, I wanna thank you, your leadership, thank your Community Development Department for their leadership, and the team they were able to help find that CB DG funding, federal funding, and grants to help support those citizens in need. And hopefully we'll bring it back bigger and better than what it was before. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. President?
Go ahead, Councilor.
To that point, you know, I'm always about accountability. Is there gonna be a report? Because I think there was some public and private dollars that were collected. And the only reason I raised this issue because someone stopped me the other week and said that they had not received anything with respect to making some minor repairs, what have you. And so I know that was a nonprofit that we directed money to, and I'd like to see some kind of update on those dollars and who got the dollars.
These are the only funds that the city has put into this, the $800,000, and they have not been expended yet. We just announced it last week. The other dollars came, I think some funds came from the county, some funds came from...
Alamo Power and those other funds.
Yes, yes, and that came through the church that's out there. I do know that the council for that district, Council Robertson, has been working to raise money over there and with the church, and, but the funds that we're talking about have not been allocated yet. There is a process, and I think that we have someone at the church from 9:00 to 4:00, 9:00 to 2:00. 9:00 to 2:00 taking applications, and you can receive up to $10,000. I wanna make sure everybody understands, you're not guaranteed $10,000, but if you can show need, up to $10,000, and we've, throughout our PEP department, we've gone out and done evaluations of, you know, the damage that was done. We pretty much got a feel for the amount of damage that was done to each individual house. Now, there were some that may have fallen through the crack, and we have an opportunity to go back out there and look at those things, but they can receive up to $10,000 through this program.
And with it, are they gonna be restricted dollars? And with it, are they gonna be restricted dollars?
John, maybe you can...
Yes, because they're federal block grant dollars, they're still are, we're still required to meet the income eligibility requirements, so...
So there's income?
Yeah, eighty percent of the amount.
Okay. So, well, then that may answer some of the questions that have been raised with me, because I don't know what the latest income was, but that might be a challenge.
If you have a name and phone number, you wanna send it to the mayor's office.
Council Skiles.
Thank you, Ms. President. I did have two things for the mayor. The first has to deal with, there's a ditch that is located in fourteen hundred block of First Place northeast, and it's been causing flooding in the homeowner's basement. They've already called, my understanding that this has been an ongoing problem since July two thousand and seven. The citizen does have a three-one-one ID number, and that's fourteen hundred block of First Place northeast. There's a drainage ditch, ditch where the drainage is stomped up. And we have a picture here that shows about the homeowner's basement that is, this water is going into. The other thing is, I'm interested in knowing, what are we gonna do about the crime in our city? Just yesterday, I read that there were two individuals, and I know that some of this is individuals knowing one another, I get that, but I keep asking the question about, what is gonna be our plan? I haven't heard anything about a plan in place. We're getting ready to go into budget time. I know some things, obviously, we cannot legislate, but I do have a real big concern that every day, if not every other day, there's a homicide in Birmingham and nobody's speaking out about it. I just don't understand what's happening. So, you know, Mayor, if you do have a response, I'd like to hear it. I'm just trying to figure out, I've met with the chief of police, I wanna say, was that Mr. President back in January or February? I'm just trying to figure out, where are we going? I see an increased number of deaths related to homicide, but I don't see us having a plan in place, short and long term, to get this resolved.
Look, is Chief McCaskey here? Chief, she referenced the meeting that we had probably about six months, six weeks ago, in which the chief wrote by outlining activities of the special task force that we had. If you could, just briefly bring us up to date. And what we can do, we can reschedule another meeting with the chief so he can address that issue. But Chief?
Yes. Good evening. Jamal McCaskey, Birmingham Police Department. Ma'am, as you recall back during that meeting, she wrote, outlined several strategies that we have in the police department. One is a violent reduction initiative that includes the courts, some federal partners, specific task forces that target hotspots around the city. As far as the homicides that we have, you know, we had one today that was domestic-related. We've had a few others in the city this year that are domestic-related. Homicides are basically tracking where we were last year. I know it sounds like we're having multiple homicides every day, but we're about where we were last year, which was one of the lowest years that we've had in several years.
So here's what I'm going, Ms. President, if you don't mind. I know we talked about certain plans, and certainly I wouldn't talk about it in this setting. What I don't see is a holistic approach, which is what I thought the council, before we left you all, we more or less talked about a holistic approach. And one of the things that concerned me, there was a young woman that was killed, obviously it was domestic violence, though it was reported trustable, that's actually in Birmingham, that's Birmingham property, it's in my district. And I found it very interesting that the gentleman who killed this young woman, which was her boyfriend, was released on a fifty thousand dollar bond, something that's easy to make. You can bond out on five thousand dollars. Something's gotta be real wrong with that. How do you tell this woman's three children, we let a man out on murder with a five thou... And this gentleman told these children, before he left allegedly, that basically, in short there, he had killed his, killed their mother. So how do you let them out on a five thousand dollar bond? That's what I'm saying. It's not to try to go on a finger, I'm not interested in doing that at all, ever. But I'm saying something's broken with our system that got to be fixed, where people are really penalized. And there are some things that when you do get locked up, your bond is not low enough for you to be back on the street again, especially if you've admitted to the crime. That's all that I'm saying. So, Ms. President, I think that we still need to continue on to work on that comprehensive approach, because it's getting warm. And as it gets warmer, we know that things happen that don't traditionally happen during the winter. And we've gotta have a plan in place.
Ms. President, let me just say that. Each council member should have received an invitation to the Violence Reduction Initiative, that's tomorrow night, which is part of the plan that we have in place. We have lodged complaints through the police department and through the administration concerning the low bond on some of these matters. Most of the homicides that occur have a high bond or a no bond. But oftentimes, smaller crimes, they're released at a lesser amount. But we raised that issue with the Jefferson County Court System, the magistrate's office, in terms of trying to keep offenders in jail at a higher bond. It's beyond our control, but we have lodged that with the court system.
Ms. President? Yeah, well, and I was told, Mr. Mayor, that if it's capital murder, then there is no bond.
There is no bond, that's correct.
So what classifies, I guess, capital murder, if someone gets killed? And maybe you can... Chief?
Capital murder, it involves some other crime, like murder in a burglary, murder in a robbery, that would be classified as capital murder. Murder of a child in a certain age would be classified as capital murder, and there's some other pre-prints that go into what's called capital murder. And just to be clear, we don't set the bonds, we do understand.
Oh, I know that. Yeah, well, and I wanted to speak to this, you know, I'm on this app called Next Door, if you all don't have it, you need to get that app. But it kinda lets you know what's going on in your neighborhood. And, you know, I get all these remarks about the celebratory shooting that just continues to plague, you know, folks sleeping on the floor because they think a bullet is coming through the window. It's just, it's not, and it's happening, and, you know, and Mayor, and I wanna say that I've sent Chief some stuff, and caught the mayor, and he's resolved some of these issues, but I'm saying this is just about every day or every week occurrences. And I just, you know, I wanna see some real, you know, resolve to this issue, because it's not, you know, it's a hard sale. And I mean this in all honesty. You know, my wife went to leave because she has to come home to this. You know, and it's every night, every other night, somebody shoots, somebody, and, you know, and it's, and I don't have a garage, you just go into the garage. I have to have a breezeway, you have to walk. And that concerns me in the neighborhood. I know we're getting the lights, and that's gonna help us, but I just wanna see what are we doing in neighborhoods, because this is primarily where this shooting is taking place. And, I mean, and I would think that they're doing it because it doesn't look like anybody cares, somebody thinking the other person's calling police and what have you. Now, one of the things I suggested, even at that meeting we had, that when somebody reports a shooting, that maybe, you know, we got this robo-call, that maybe we can send out a message that, hey, if you continue this shooting, we're gonna come and we're gonna arrest you. You know, something's gotta be done, because there's no fee, but, you know, but it's reaping havoc on the neighborhoods.
Yes, sir. And Council, as you recall from our meeting, we talked about the shot spot system that we have in certain neighborhoods throughout the city. We're looking to expand our shot spot system, but, and as part of the meeting that you came to, that's our monthly strategy meeting. And we discuss crimes, and we target hotspots, and we go after bad guys. We have a neighborhood enforcement team that targets locations, we have a crime reduction team that targets individuals, and our number one priority in the police department is targeting violent crime.
Thank you, Council Tyson.
Yes. Mayor, apartments behind Tittysville Library, they are in such bad condition, they fighting out there every day. I actually was at Woodland Park Neighborhood Association meeting, and public, the code enforcement person over Public Works, they were there, and the police officer. They are, it's just so out of control to where she actually go up to actually give, you know, put a rifle code. They're fighting so hard to where she has to get run back to her truck. It's a big problem, those apartments, they are, I know they hadn't passed the city code. If we can get someone out there, I know they will fail the city code. They, you can stand in the living room and see the granite. They have cardboard up at the windows instead of glass, it's big spaces up under the door, and it's just, they are in really bad shape. And they have that record behind the library, and they start, they go up two blocks. And we really need to see if we can get some, some people out there to condemn those apartments.
We'll get some code inspectors out there to examine. Council Rafferty.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask if we could also do an education campaign to let citizens know when they hear gunshots, don't post it on Facebook, call nine-one-one, because that's the biggest thing I'm seeing now, is that, and I understand the police department has to track them. Well, without the information from the constituency, they can't track it. And what they're doing right now is they're posting on Facebook, asking, has anyone heard it? But they don't think it's important to report it to the police department. So if you could also, if we could do some kind of PSA and let them know, if you don't tell us, we can't help. Thank you.
All right. Let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers. So moved.
All in favor, let me know, Mr. Guy?
Aye. All right, first speaker.
Kenyon Woods.
State your name and address for the record, we have three minutes.
Kenyon Woods, fourteen hundred First Place, northeast Birmingham, Alabama.
Go ahead.
I live, I've made several complaints to the city of Birmingham from two thousand and seven to present. I call the city, the state, the county. Everybody don't want to claim the ditch behind my house. My key is, we claim the ditch out because they call three-on-one several times. No one ever responds. Finally, last year, I called the department's reputation, they came to clean the ditch out, just, they felt sorry for me because we have constantly flooding. It's, I have sixty-eight thousand dollars worth of property damage. My insurance company dropped me. I have twenty thousand dollars in personal damage, and I need some assistance. I don't know what to do. I can call Thomas Miller, he sent engineers out, they come out and look at the ditch. By the time they get to the ditch, we have already cleaned the ditch out ourselves. And I need some assistance. Who owns the ditch behind my house?
If you, if you would, get with this gentleman here, give him your name and address, and we'll follow up and get somebody out there.
No, gee.
Hmm?
What's this night?
Mr. Biddes. I'm Mr. Biddes. Council Skiles.
I'm gonna leave my microphone. Is this your property?
Yes.
Okay. Well, then, you know I'm working for you, right? Because I didn't even know you were gonna be here tonight. But what I'll do is, I'll give this to Mr. Mayor. And because you said, you stated to my office that this has been going on since July of two thousand and seven. And I know that I talk about this all the time during council meeting, that we do have a lot of flooding in there, which is the reason why, or in District One, which is the very reason why I'm always adamant about keeping these ditches clean, because what's happening is that, I don't know what infrastructure and the Army Corps of Engineers and whoever else is responsible for it, including the city of Birmingham, but they did a poor job on the eastern side of Birmingham. And as a result, these ditches are right next to a home. And whatever happens with that ditch, if it floods, then it goes to the property owner. And so, we'll take care of that. You call Mr. Biddes, as Mr. Mayor instructed you to do. Call me back and let me know, and I'm gonna pass this on so that the mayor can see your picture and everything else.
Okay.
But thank you for showing up tonight. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dr. Artis Murphy. Dr. Murphy, state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Artis Murphy, to the mayor's and council office. I come to just say, to give you a reminder of the plight and how we got here as a people. Our plight was so strong once upon a time as a people, that it made parents give their children up to go to a park and risk their lives. Our plight was so strong in this country that it made people from the north come on a freedom ride to give their life on a bus that would bomb. Our plight was so strong in this country that it gave away the visions and dreams. The plight of our people today is sad. The core issue of murders and the way we are living in this city as a people, it just, it's a shame. Our plight was so strong in this country that in China, in Tiananmen Square, it had those people fighting against socialism in their native tongue, saying, we shall overcome. We have to understand, whether you wanna hear it or not, God has sent me here to do what I need to do, and anybody who know me, I'm gonna do just that. And I'm not gonna be no slouch about it, it's just a reminder that we are gonna do better as a people, and I hope the city of Birmingham stand up and say, we will not sit down as though we don't have any say-so in the matter of our lives here in this city. And we're gonna make sure that the people that we choose, Eric Murphy, my buddy's gonna do it, to be held accountable for the people that they really serve. And we're gonna get the economic power that we need in this city so we can change those things like murders in this city and educate our people like they should be. I'm saying to you today, it ain't going down like you think it's going down.
All right. Next speaker, John Tatum. Would I please hold in your applause? I'm not gonna do that in here. Council people. Mr. Tatum, state your name and address for the record, we have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is John Tatum. I live at twelve fifteen Twenty Fourth Street North, Birmingham, I guess the Norwood area. I'm here to talk about street paving, and I just wanna highlight these four areas, where I live, Twelfth Avenue North, and Twenty Sixth Street. There's a hole in the street. There's a hole on the corner of Twenty Sixth Street and Twelfth Avenue North. East Scooter Road, when you go up that hill by allied van lines and all steel fence at that traffic light right there, from that traffic light all the way over the hill to West Oxford Road, is holes in the street, both sides. Center Street, from Eighth Avenue, which is Smithfield Library, all the way to Sixth Avenue South, there are holes in the street. I've torn my car up. I've just spent fourteen hundred dollars fixing the front end of my car. I go to church at Mason City, AOH. Collegeville, behind the community center there, there's a baseball field, and where the businesses are on that strip right there, from, I guess, from, I forget the name of the street, but from one end all the way down to the railroad tracks, there are holes in the street. Eighth Avenue North, where the bicycle trail, you have bicyclists, you got the bicycle markers in the street from the social security building all the way down to Arkadelphia Road. Who wants to ride a bicycle in holes? The street paving is terrible here. We've had bond issue after bond issue after bond issue, and nothing has happened to pave these streets. And one last street, Tenth Avenue North, the street that goes down by McWayne, the old McWayne building right there, is holes in the street. is holes in the street. Please, somebody, anybody, save my car and pave these streets. Thank you.
Next speaker. Um, Richard Dickerson, he's on our list. Still here. All right, that concludes our speakers. Let's move to suspend our rules for two presentations. So move.
All in favor, let me know my thing out.
Aye. All right, first presentation is Council Parker. Two minutes, Council Parker.
Yes, sir. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, with Mr. Orlando, Coach Orlando Burks come up and, uh, has a brief presentation, uh, regarding a exciting trophy that they have. And also, uh, Mr. Kevin Moore is also here, the director of parks.
How you doing? My name is Coach Orlando Burks, I'm the center director at Martin Luther King Recreation Center in, uh, Avondale. And what we have today, we have our nine-year-old basketball team and our ten-year-old basketball team. Uh, on last month, March eleventh through thirteenth, and in February, our nine and ten-year-old basketball team won the district championships over in Homewood, representing the city of Birmingham. Our ten-year-old team came to second place in the district championships. And our nine-year-old team played in the state championship in Gadsden, Alabama. We lost by four points to a team out of Mobile, but fortunately we got a chance to play them a year, we beat them. And my ten-year-old team also made to the state championships in Gadsden, Alabama. And they represented and they ended up losing to a team out of Uphaul, but I'm very proud of these guys. So on behalf of Superintendent Kevin Moore, Supervisor Terry Bushler, we would like to present Council Parker, who represents our neighborhood with our first place, uh, District Three Championship Trophy. We got, we got four of them in the truck, so we'll bring the other one out. I think we dropped that one.
Thank you all and next year we'll be receiving another trophy like Mr. Robeson is with, uh, we know the, uh, high school. So I expect us to have several more trophies for years to come. But, cool, okay, all right, well, thank you, all right.
Could they, could they introduce themselves?
My name, my name is Legion. And I go to Althamont.
My name is Montez and I go to M- Wollam Elementary.
My name is Terry and I go to Phillips Academy.
My name is Edgar Cow and I go Lewis Elementary.
My name is Caleb and I go to Phillips Academy.
My name is Logan and I go to Gardendale.
My name is Jane Jones, I go to Cameron Johnson.
My name is Kamara and I go to Epic.
My name is Maria and I go to Corstal.
My name is Oscar Cana and I go to Phillips Academy.
Mr. Protem, thank you. Coach Burks, to that outstanding championship team, congratulations to you all. And, uh, it's truly a highlight to see our young people succeed, uh, in athletics and competing across other cities and other communities across the state of Alabama. My question to you, Coach Burks, is I've, I've never seen Council Parker dribble a ball in his life. So I wonder why Council Parker is getting this trophy. I know he represents the district, but he gotta at least know how to dribble a basketball.
And last night, now, I went bowling, now.
I'm telling you, okay.
And I won. We can go out and hit the, we can go on the court now.
Council, that's bowling, council, that's not basketball.
But Ms. Tyson, will you, okay, I'm saying, will you arrange a basketball game?
Now, now we're talking.
Okay. Like the mayor's office and the council with the park board, we can, you know, we can, we can get it going now.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, all right, good.
Well, uh, Council Coach, hold on. Council Skills.
I yield the council work because I actually want those young men to come and go to their coach.
And Coach, I, I, you know, I kind of, I kind of bear attention. And you pull in folks from all over the place, so obviously you must be an outstanding coach. And so when I run into young people, they really want to play basketball, I'm gonna send them to you because it's evident. Uh, these kids come from all walks of life and I think it really represents, uh, what, uh, what it's all about. It's diversity and, and being, uh, on a good toolage. Obviously, you have a great sense of discipline, uh, all these young people are so wonderful. So, uh, thank you for what you're doing and the impact that you're making on, on the lives of so many. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. One, one, one last thing too, I wanted to hit a bit my other coach, he's honestly a little shy. He didn't want to get up, but he does a very great job with our ten-year-old boys. Matter of fact, he's been in the state championship two of the last three years. And in the last three years, he's probably won over seventy-five games and only lost maybe two. He has the number one field break team in the state of Alabama. And, uh, he's kind of shy, but I need to come up, Coach Eric Thomas. Come on, Eric. He does outstanding job with the field break boys. He's gonna take a picture, but I wanted to get on the side.
Let me take a man, uh, if, if it's okay, uh, Mr. Burks as well, because, uh, the impact of what he is doing is, uh, bringing additional funding to the Birmingham Park Board, uh, through generous donations. Uh, just this past week, we were made aware of a hundred and twenty thousand dollar allocation that we're gonna receive for him at Luther King Park, Rexson, as well as the, uh, outside basketball courts at Stone Park. So, uh, the work that he does is impactful and is bringing benefits back to the city of Birmingham.
Uh, Coach, I tried to prep you, I told you, don't go nowhere. I just yielded to the council member, come on, Mr. Moore, I give you a directive. And then I see the children are taking pictures in the back, but, uh, Councilor Parker, can you round up the fellas and bring them on up?
They're just, they're taking pictures, just, just let them take it.
Well, but, but my message to them, I want them to hear, Mr. President, if you don't mind. But I'll start off with you, Coach. Many people, um, talk about the various programs that they want to do in the city. They talk about young folk and crime and all the different things. But let me just tell you one thing that I do know. It takes a gentle giant to teach young Davids how to slake Elias in life. I want to tell you, Coach, from me to you, it was a teacher that changed my life forever and her name is Linda Parsons. Don't ever underestimate what it is that you do for these children. Because at the end of the day, they're dealing with a whole different scenario than when you and I were growing up. We talk about the village, but there are very few gatekeepers in the village these days, okay? And that's for a lot of reasons. But I do want to say to you how much I appreciate you. Don't ever want you to get discouraged. Don't even want you to look for a pat on the back. I want you to do it because you know in your heart that if you sow the right seed, those same young men say, "I remember, Coach." And they won't just look out for Coach, they're gonna look out for the seeds of Coach. You know what that means, Coach? And that's, that's the way I look at it. I believe in young people and I don't just say that, I actually mean it. And I know that Mr. Moore, uh, has done a wonderful job with the park board, always seeking opportunities. Where we can be able to get some young folk involved in some recreational activities, but challenging them to be able to go to that next level in life. So I want to say to you, Council Parker, uh, how much I appreciate you. I'm really just talking to Mr. President, if, if these boys can come on up. Because I heard you say one thing, Coach. You talked about, well, you know, they did good, but they lost. I have a different spin on that. I say that they won, they just had a challenge along the way. Next year, they gonna overcome that challenge and they gonna be the winners that they already are. You understand? But I know that this is how you change society. You start training them life skills through basketball, training them through a way and a teaching mechanism that they enjoy. And then you start teaching them about life. That's how you gonna train these young boys to be real men and to be productive members of society. So anyway, I'm, I don't want to prolong the meeting, uh, Mr. President. And I hope these boys don't go nowhere because I'm Mama Scales in my district and I definitely want to talk to them, okay? But thank you, Mr. Parker, thank you, Coach. Thank you, everybody that participated, including the assistant coach, I'm sorry.
Can you give us about thirty seconds to take a couple of pictures?
Uh, uh, no, we need to move on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. The next presentation is Birmingham Parker Record, I'm sorry. It's Ms. Ernestine Washington Black Women's Roundtable, Council Tyson.
Come on up, ladies.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to introduce you to a, a group of women. All of them are not here. We had students that we actually, uh, took to Washington DC with the Black Women's Roundtable. It's actually a part of the National Coalition on Black City Participation. We took students, we took teachers and we have been doing this for the last fifteen years. And the, uh, reason we took them to DC was actually to lobby for, uh, different policies that affect their lives and affect their communities. We had an opportunity to, uh, to meet with our representatives that represented us in the state of Alabama and also, uh, that was actually in other states that's in, in our United States and we actually had an opportunity to speak with. And now let them go ahead and talk.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ernestine Washington. I live at sixteen fifty-six Tuscaloosa Avenue. First, I want to say thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to go to Washington DC. Not only did I get the opportunity to go, I represented Alabama well. I came back with Assistant Community Service Award. Also, my foster daughter, who is not here, she won the youth department Assistant of the Year for the state of Alabama.
My name is Chrisaphia Hill. My address is nineteen fifteen Avenue L. Um, thanks again for the opportunity to go to Washington. I didn't get an opportunity to go with Sheeta this year, but I went with Sheeta last year. And, um, after coming back from DC last year, it empowered me as far as the community, uh, community service that needs to be done. And returning back to Birmingham last year from DC with Sheeta, I started my own nonprofit. Um, my nonprofit is Hope with Grace. And this year, we did a prom dress giveaway for Birmingham City School. So throughout during the prom dress giveaway, we was able to give away seven dresses to girls who attend the Birmingham School Sisterhood.
Good evening, my name is Materia Gibson. I live at five twenty-nine Ferndale Road. I'm a teacher at A.H. Parker High School. I was given the opportunity to service a chaperone for Kalen Simmons, who was one of the young ladies who attended the Black Women's Roundtable in Washington. To you, uh, Councilwoman Tyson, I want to thank you for that excellent educational opportunity for that young girl. It was her first ever flight and she did well. It was her first ever trip to Washington DC. So thank you for that wonderful opportunity.
Ms. Gibson, can you tell them, the representatives that y'all actually met with, uh?
One of them was Jeff S- Saxon and he did hear us because he sent a letter. He did hear us.
And I would like y'all to, um, look at the video that was...
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are doing a series of, uh, of empowerment talks. Uh, we're actually having one Friday. I am my sister's keeper, Sisters, Let's Talk. We're actually having it at Illitons Village Community Center, four thirty-six Center Street, on the twenty-ninth at five thirty. And we're asking for everyone, if you're interested, to actually come out and participate.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
All right, so we're ready to move on with the consideration of our consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda starts on page two with items three and four. Page five, items five through eight are on consent. Page four, items nine through twelve are on consent. Page five, items thirteen through fifteen are on consent. Page six, items sixteen through eighteen are on consent. Page seven, items nineteen through twenty-one are on consent. Page eight, items twenty-two through twenty-four are on consent. Page nine, items twenty-five through twenty-seven are on consent. On page ten, item twenty-eight is on consent and items thirty and thirty-one were added to the consent agenda. Page eleven, items six, I'm sorry, thirty-two and thirty-three were added to the consent agenda. That's items thirty-two and thirty-three. Page twelve, item thirty-six is added to the consent agenda. Skip over to page fourteen, we added items forty, forty-one and forty-three to the consent agenda. Page fifteen, items forty-four, forty-five and forty-six were added to the consent agenda. Then on page seventeen, items fifty-one, fifty-two and fifty-three... Then on page seventeen, items fifty-one, fifty-two, and fifty-three are on consent. And on page eighteen, items fifty-four through fifty-nine are on consent. Page nineteen, items sixty through sixty-five are on consent. Page twenty, items sixty-six through seventy are on consent. Page twenty-one, items seventy-one through seventy-three are on consent. Page twenty-two, item number seventy-four is on consent. And on page twenty-three, item seventy-nine was added to the consent agenda. And on page twenty-four, we added items eighty and eighty-one to the consent agenda.
All right. Any members of the council wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? Uh, or any member of council wish to speak to an item that's been placed on the consent agenda or speak to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Abbott, Roberson.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President. You missed the public.
Uh, I did. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. All right.
Okay.
I can't hear you.
I think that...
Is it, are you here to speak to an item on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, just come to the podium. What number is it?
Item twelve and thirteen.
Hold on. Um, items twelve and thirteen, okay. What, what, what? State your name and address for the record and tell us.
Okay, my, my name is Darrell Thomas. I am the owner of, um, two-two, excuse me, two-two-four Navajo Trail.
Okay.
And, um, cause on the item number twelve is currently running. It has a current tag and it has been moved.
All right. Uh, what we need to do is just, we'll, we can remove items twelve and thirteen?
Yes.
Uh, from the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And then, once we get to those items, we can delay it for, we can give the mayor's office time to go and check. Make sure that whatever is...
Okay.
Make sure it isn't... All right. Let's remove item twelve and thirteen.
Okay.
There any other members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda?
Item eighty-two.
Yes, and did you wanna speak to it?
They don't have it.
All right. We're ready, Mr. Clerk. Did you have one too, sir? State your name and address for the record and tell us.
Yes, my name is, uh, Charles Thomas. Uh, my address is five two-two-eight Park Avenue in the mother. Uh, I don't know if...
What item?
Item three and four.
Item, okay. Um, that's on consent right now.
Um...
Did you... Are you the owner of Cha Cha Bar and Grill?
Yes.
Yeah. You all right? Okay. Thank you for your service. We're ready to vote. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak to an item that's been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? All right.
Mr. President, I move the consent agenda as a...
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
All right. The consent agenda passed. If your item was placed on consent agenda, we just took that item with one vote, and it has passed the consent agenda. So, you can stay with us for the remainder of the council meeting, or you can make an exit to the, my right, your left. All right. Um, first item should be item one, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. Uh, item one, a resolution relative to the application of sales LLC for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license for use at First Avenue Food Mart, sixty-eight oh five First Avenue North, Birmingham, New York.
All right. Do we have a move in a second?
Mr. President, Michael Mulley, item.
Second.
Roberson, Abbott, Counsel Hoyt?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing. And, uh, anyone here, we're gonna get a report from the detective. Detective Patterson, if you would, come and give us a report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, we have an application for an off-premise beer and wine license for First Avenue Food Mart, sixty-eight oh five First Avenue North. Uh, Mr. Chairman, for this location, sixty-eight oh five First Avenue North. There were sixteen incidents. The most recent incident was on April the thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. A stolen vehicle was recovered at this location. Uh, there were dangerous drugs, wanted persons arrested, miscellaneous incident reports, trespassing incident reports. Mr. Chairman, there were thefts of property, and the, uh, most distant of those reports was on October the twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen. And again, sixteen incidents and arrests for sixty-eight oh five First Avenue North.
Is the applicant present? Like to speak to this item? Anyone for or against?
I think yes.
Would you state your name and address for the record?
Peters, seventeen forty-five Twenty-Eighth Street Inns, Lee, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one eight.
Tariq Madonna, First Avenue Food Mart.
Speaking to the mic.
Speaking to the microphone.
Sixty-eight oh five First Avenue Food Mart. Tariq Madonna. I'm the owner of that building.
Do you have anything to say, Ms. Peters?
Yes, sir. Since Mr. Tariq Madonna took over January of the fifth, two thousand and sixteen, most of the incidents that have occurred, he hasn't called the police for that. So, he has become very active in the neighborhoods. And when we went to the neighborhood meeting, they did notice a change in the ownership. He keeps the parking lot clean. He does not let anyone law inside the store or outside the store now. So, majority of the calls that were made were made by him and his manager.
Thank you. You can have a seat on the front row and see if, um, any comments, uh, from the public, any other person here to speak for or against this item? Anyone, uh, member of council would like to speak to some of, yes?
Mr. Chairman, do you have a, uh, neighborhood report or vote?
Well, I, and that's what I was thinking. I guess I'd be disadvantaged in not being in the city hall. I don't have access to the report, and I thought it would've been in this package, but it's not. Um, but we did recommend it, uh, as I recall, uh, because of the number of incidents. And she did explain that, um, most of these were fact that he called. But, um, but I always think, you know, it's a management issue. And even though he's calling, uh, that doesn't, uh, you know, uh, allude to the fact that, that perhaps he, um, it's a management issue. You know, so calling, him calling, that, that really impressed me, quite frankly. I'm just, you know, that's just my, uh, spill on it. But we did recommend it out of the council for that reason. I just think there needs to be some understanding, and I don't think we have that. Uh, because if people feel they can still go there and sell whatever they do, and they're getting locked up on the premises, then it's not a good place to be. It's obvious to me.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel Scales?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Could the young lady and, and the gentleman come to the microphone, please? I do, ma'am, have a question for you. Um, you, what, what are you to this gentleman?
I'm his accountant, and I also attend the, uh, neighborhood meeting. I attend the public safety, and I keep his books.
So, you, you were his accountant. And the reason being is, I want you to correct me if I'm wrong. Weren't you representing some other person that came before public safety? Uh, and there was, we were asking questions, different owner. But is this your first time coming before the council on behalf of another person?
No. That's what I do for a living.
That's what you do for a living? As an accountant?
Yes, ma'am. If they buy a store and they want to apply for their off-premise beer and wine transfer, I do paperwork for them.
Okay. So, help me to understand, if you don't mind, what exactly do you do for a living?
I'm an accountant, but I also get paid to do beer and wine transfer. So, I do the paperwork, I do the legwork for them. And then I do their sale tax, I do their payroll. I make sure all other taxes are paid on time. Then I do their corporate tax at home.
So, do you have a city business license?
Yes, ma'am. Every year.
Okay. Are you a neighborhood officer too?
Yes, ma'am. But I do not represent anybody in my neighborhood.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm, I'm not, just for the sake of unity, I'm not gonna say anything more. Cuz I knew I remembered you coming before the council, but for another situation that was very similar in nature. So, I could tell that this is some business transaction other than just speaking. So, it had to be something. So, sir, can you come up to the microphone for me? So, let me just say this as a council member. We walk in your business in the city of Birmingham. I don't think keeping paper and litter out for your parking lot is, is, uh, something that should be abnormal, that you've made normal. That just should be normal, okay? So, the sixteen incidents that are in question, you're saying that since you have been the owner, none of these things have occurred since you've been there?
There's nobody over there anymore, please. Uh, actually, we just take it over, uh, three months ago.
Can you speak to the microphone so I can hear you?
Actually, I just take the business three months ago over. There was the owner before us. He, he let the people hang out inside or outside and drink in beer and open continuing inside the store. So, we didn't let nobody. We called the police every time they come into the store.
You call the police every time they come into the store? Why is that?
Some bad people, they come and they buy a beer and like they used to do before, they open the container and drink from the store. It's not allowed to drink in, in the business.
Okay. That, then, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm gonna say this politely and be done with this. It sounds like you knew you were buying this in a, in a questionable environment, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, you do realize that for insurance purposes, every time you call the police, you're putting in your, your business at risk of those complaints that the officer's talking about, right?
Yes. Because the customer, when they see them drunk or drunk, they saw everybody complaining.
Okay. I, I'm gonna respect the time. Mr. Chair, you come back to me, cuz I'm interested in your security plan, cuz the police can't just patrol your store or police your store. You're gonna have to have some security in place, and I'm interested in hearing that and knowing that, Mr. Chair.
Counsel, I mean Counsel Abbott, I'm sorry.
Yes, well, that was what I wanted to ask about. I wanted to ask about your security plan, your cameras, officers. How are you dealing with security? Cuz it sounds like you're trying to clean the place up. And we've certainly heard from our law department about transfers. We can't hold you accountable for what the last guy did. We can only hold you accountable for what you've done. So, tell us what you're doing, please.
Okay, so, what we do right now, we already have security camera everywhere. So, anybody come in inside the store, customer, they buy something and go. So, nobody can stand outside or inside the store. And besides that, we have restaurant belong to someone else.
A restaurant?
Yeah.
Rented to someone else? Okay. But that doesn't have anything to do with security?
No.
So, do you have any police officers or anyone who's patrolling? Or just the people who work for you or watching the cameras?
I guess the people they work for us.
The people who work for you? Do you have more than one at a time?
Yes.
How many do you have on each shift?
About three people.
Three people? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman.
Okay. Um, Counsel Scales, did you want to come back?
Yes, sir. Cuz I'm interested in knowing the folk that you have that work for you. Do these people have arresting authority? And it doesn't sound like that, Mr. President. Do they have arresting authority?
No.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me ask this for the record. Uh, Detective Patterson, can you come back and, and see how many incidents have occurred since, um, his ownership?
Mr. Chairman, this application was made on February the seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. Uh, of the sixteen incidents, ten of them have occurred since then.
All right. Very good. All right. Mr. President, I turn this back over to you. This ends our public hearing.
We're ready to vote, and because we don't have our machines, we're gonna have to just do roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Okay.
On every item that we, that's gonna be before us.
Counselmember Abbott?
Um...
Counselmember Hoyt?
No.
Counselmember Lundey?
Yes.
Counselmember Parker? Counselmember Rabbit?
No.
President Pro Jim Roberson?
No.
Counselmember Scales? Out. Counselmember Tyson? President Austin?
No.
That item fails. Next item.
Should be item two, a resolution relative to the application of Savannah Food Mart LLC for the transfer of an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at Savannah's number six, two oh one Sixth Avenue Southwest, Birmingham, New York.
Do we have a move in a second?
I, second.
Second.
Roberson, Hoyt, Counsel Hoyt?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Detective Patterson, if you would, come and give a report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is an application to transfer an existing off-premise beer and wine license at Savannah's number six, two oh one Sixth Avenue Southwest. Mr. Chairman, at two oh one Sixth Avenue Southwest, there were nineteen incidents. The most recent of those was on October the ninth, two thousand and sixteen. A robbery was reported from this location. Of those nineteen incidents, there were thefts of property, trespassings, disorderly persons, miscellaneous incident reports, drunken persons arrests. Thefts of property, and again, nineteen incidents for two oh one Sixth Avenue Southwest.
All right. Is applicant present? Please come forth, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Ronnie Johnson at six twenty-one twenty-sixth Court Northwest, Birmingham. I'm, uh, general manager of Savannah Food Mart. We have six stores in Birmingham. We just took over this store, I think, in October. And, uh, they've been selling beer and wine in there for over twenty-five years. I said, if you had don't check the incident report, I don't know how many years it's been there since we been there. So...
All right. Well, thank you. Um, so, so what is your, uh, coming to see?
Well, we want to see if you get, transfer our beer and wine license over.
Okay. All right. Very good. Um, if you have a seat. Now, what, now, tell me again, uh, one of my colleagues wanted to know, what did you take over?
I think it was either September or October. We don't even know who the owner was. We leased a building from the oil company.
I'm just trying to understand. Um, so, the oil company is one of the owners of the building and it's subleases?
Yes, it's subleasing.
Okay.
They put their amount, they put...
And you represent the oil company?
Uh, no, sir, I represent Savannah Food Mart. And that's, we're the ones trying to get the, uh, license transferred over.
Okay. Were you aware of all these incidents?
Uh, no. I didn't even know where the store was when we got here. We got six stores in Birmingham.
Um, Detective Patterson, if you could just kinda give us a, a range of incident that's taken place since September?
Mr. Chairman, the application was made on October the sixth, two thousand and fifteen. And of the nineteen incidents, they range in date from October the twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, uh, up until October the, I mean, April the ninth, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay. Well, that explains. Thank you, sir. Um, any comment from the council? Anyone here to speak for or against this item, other than the, um, applicant?
Mr. Chairman, do we have the neighborhood vote on that?
Uh, we don't. I don't, I don't have any of the neighborhood reports, um, for this. I mean, I could provide it, uh, send it via... Uh, we don't, I don't, I don't have any of the neighborhood reports, um, for this, I mean, I could provide it, uh, send it via email.
Maybe the applicant knows.
But there was no recommendation, yeah, if you know the neighborhood report.
You have the microphone.
You have the neighborhood meeting and voting for it.
Okay. Any questions from council? Okay, alright.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I have some readiness, uh, due to the fact that it's not a neighborhood report. And the applicant is now verbally stating that he's vote for the council, I mean, for the neighborhood, in support of this item. Uh, I think it'd be to our advantage to at least delay this item for a week until we get the neighborhood report from, uh, your office, do you have motion?
Well, and, and let me say this before we do that, but a lot of times, the neighborhood would not have gotten the police report. And so sometime, they make the decision unbeknownst to the, uh, the actual incidents. And so, uh, but I just wanna make sure that you're all aware of that, but that's fine, I have no problem with delaying. Do you have a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's, it's, it's actually in my district, but because they was serving liquor for twenty-five years, that don't mean they have to serve it for twenty-five months. It's time for a change. Because that many incidents is just totally ridiculous, and I know exactly where it is, and that's where they selling the meth, the, uh, the synthetic drugs, uh, stealing the booze down.
Do you have motion for it?
Yes, Counselor Abbott, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wanna, before we, uh, delay, I wanted to ask the law department a question regarding the transfers. My understanding is a transfer is an item of value and it's being paid for by the applicant. And I was concerned that the applicant said he didn't know who they were transferring from. But that would all be on the transfer form, correct? Is that correct? I can't hear you.
Yes, ma'am, in the case of transfers, uh, the revenue department has the, uh... The previous owner, uh, sign a document. So, that would be on, uh, documentation that the city would have in the case of a transfer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, and, Mr. President, it appears that, uh, these incidents have taken place since they had been Savannah's. Is what I want to point out based on the report that the Detective Patterson has given us.
Mr. President, I could move motion for a one-week delay.
Second.
Roberson, Abbott? Ready to vote on a one-week delay? Roll call.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Aye.
Councilmember Lundey?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker? Councilmember Rafferty?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Roberson?
Aye.
Councilmember Skills?
Aye.
Councilmember Tyson? President Austin?
Yes, that item be delayed for one week, next item, Mr. Clerk. Item twelve and thirteen, just calling both of them.
Well, we withdrew twelve, thirteen, right?
We withdrew from the consent, but we still need to delay that for a week.
Item twelve, a resolution authorizing the basement removal of the following in-office motor vehicle of their public nuisance, existing on the following property, and the cost of removal to be assessed against the registered owner of the vehicle in the hearing of our party.
And thirteen?
Item thirteen, a resolution authorizing the basement removal of the following in-office motor vehicle of their public nuisance, existing on the following property, and the cost of removal to be assessed against the registered owner of the vehicle in the hearing of our party, that's green, uh, compact.
Do you have a motion for a one-week delay?
Mr. President, I move for a one-week delay.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded for a one-week delay.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundey?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker? Councilmember Rafferty? President Pro Tim Roberson?
Aye.
Councilmember Skills?
Aye.
Councilmember Tyson? President Austin?
Yes, that, those two items have been delayed for one week, that's item twelve and item thirteen. Um, next, let's move to suspend the rules, we have one presentation brief, that's about two minutes, that was not presented to us, they left her, they forgot about it, bless their heart.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, let it be done by say aye.
Aye.
On the close, Ms. Spencer, if you wanna give us that announcement real quick?
Bonita, we are in the process of planning a commemorative service. We will have a worship service tomorrow evening at Belka Baptist Church from five-thirty to six-thirty. We want y'all to come out to enjoy that, it is a worship service, it's a celebration. Yes, we did have one, one day, and that's something we need to celebrate, it was not more than that. Uh, and on Saturday, April the thirtieth, we're gonna have a commemorative festival at Highland Central Rec Center from eleven till four P.M. And we're asking that y'all come out and participate, and that everything is free, only thing we are asking is that you bring a lawn chair. We have, uh, vendor forms for those who would like to be vendors, we also have, um, volunteer forms for those who like to be volunteers. We're asking that y'all come out, everything is free, we have food, we're gonna have fun, we're gonna have games, we're gonna have entertainment, we're gonna have live entertainment. So we're asking that you all come out, and we thank you all for suspending the rules for us at this time, thank you.
Thank you, alright, Mr. Clerk, call up item twenty-nine and thirty-nine.
A resolution approving page two of the Birmingham Water Recreation Bond Projects, item thirty-nine. In order to further mend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, by appropriating ninety thousand dollars for recreation center growing, twenty-seven thousand dollars gym floor replacement, eighty-one thousand dollars for research, pool surface, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for pool housing roof replacements, five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for Memorial Park improvements, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Rickwood Field facility upgrades, forty-five thousand dollars for England Park field upgrades, ninety thousand dollars for Madison Park improvements, one hundred and eight thousand dollars for bleacher upgrades, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars for Stockton Park walking track upgrades, one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to AD Gas and Park improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to Willowood Park improvements, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars to Marconi Park improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to North Birmingham Park improvements, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Norwood, Norwood Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Brother Bryan Park improvements, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to Sherman Heights Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Sherman Heights Park improvements, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to Wyland Park improvements, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Harriman Park improvements, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for soft landing for playgrounds, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to Pine Hill Park improvements, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for city park improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to Sam Harrison Park improvements, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to East Lakewood Park improvements, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to London Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars for Learning Tree Park improvements, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to Highland Park Racquet Club improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to Roosevelt Park improvements, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to Park, Park improvements, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to Spring Water Park improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to North Brad Park improvements, ninety thousand dollars to Hawkins Park improvements, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to Central Park improvements, ninety dollars dollars to East Pitsu Valley Park improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to Chris Lane Park improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to Fountain Heights Park improvements, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to George Ford Park improvements, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to East Brownwood Park improvements, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for West Goldwild Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Henry Crumpson Recreation Center improvements, sixty-seven five hundred dollars, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to Garden, Highland Park improvements, one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars to Main Street Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Miniville Park improvements, forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to Chemical Storage Buildings that pools, one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to Sandusky Recreation Park, uh, Center improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Jimmy Hudson Park, Sandusky Recreation Center improvements, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to Grace Park improvements, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Kelly England Park improvements, four hundred and five thousand dollars to land acquisitions and green space, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to John McConville Park improvements, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to Vulcan Park improvements, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Avondale, Avondale Village Park improvements, four hundred and five thousand dollars to Cooper Green Park Baseball Field improvements, one hundred and eight thousand dollars to Tannen Gardens Improvements, one hundred and fifty-seven five thou- five hundred dollars to Enzy Park improvements, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to Harrison Park improvements, sixty-seven five hundred thousand dollars to, five hundred dollars to WCPAT Park Lighting, two hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to Tom Bradford Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Echo Highlands Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Berry's Park improvements, forty-five thousand dollars to Wiggins Park improvements, one million two hundred thousand dollars to Legion Field improvements, and four hundred thousand dollars to project management fees.
Alright, do we have a mover and a second?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Alright, Abbott, Parker, um, Councilmember Parker, you have a substitute item for this, for these?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to...
Turn your microphone.
Okay, uh, just wanted to talk through just a couple of the, um, modifications. And you have the list that I provided to you all, that I handed out.
Did you give a copy of this to the clerk?
Yes, sir, he has a copy of, he has a copy as well, I think the mayor and Mr. Bittes has a copy. And basically, uh, in the roof, uh, pool roof, pool house roof replacements, we included Fountain Heights, uh, pool house that would be included in the, uh, in that item for three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, if you go down to the bottom of page one, Marconi Park, uh, that funding is a hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars, so that's, that would be part of the substitute. If you go over to page two, um, land acquisition and park improvements for Harriman Park, um, it's two hundred and eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And if you go over to page, the next page, Wahoma Park, uh, it was increased to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and those are all part of the amended version, uh, everything else stays the same, and that balances out to the eleven million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand and five hundred dollars. And that includes, um, I think everyone's request, and, uh... And the Skills has something to say, and I just wanna say I've enjoyed working with the mayor, with the mayor's office, with the park board, and especially with my colleagues, uh, cuz this has been a... It's, it's been a process that was necessary, and I know we all wanna make sure we focus on our neighborhood parks, but this is only step one of the process. And so step two, we're working with the mayor, and with Mr. Bittes, and with the park board, and also with the council, making sure that we now focus on having these projects completed. Uh, our goal is within the next six months to a year to have all these projects that we're going to be passing tonight, uh, completed. So, uh, we wanna work very diligently, and we wanna make sure that everyone is a part of the process moving forward, and everyone is involved in the process. And I think as we move forward, uh, I think it's helpful if we all can gather together with the park board, coming together with, you know, the council, with the mayor, and staff, you know, on a regular basis to get stats reports. And I think, uh, that is something that we will be making sure to happen, uh, very vigorously, so, uh, that's the, uh, that's my report, uh, Skills?
Counselor Abbott and Counselor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to ask two questions. Now, in order to make all of this work fit within the amount of money we actually have in the bond, y'all did a ten percent cut?
Yes, ma'am, let me, uh, just walk you through that.
Of all, of all the projects?
Well, let me ask you, as you know, we, uh, probably about three or four, about a month ago, we had about fifty million dollars worth of requests, that was proposed projects. And, you know, we delayed it for three weeks, and during that three-week time period, we, you know, had a tour of the parks, we had, uh, several meetings with the park board, and also just to talk through the, the process. And so, uh, working through and everyone, uh, we came up with the list, we think that, that everyone is, is, uh, is, goes home, goes away, you know, feeling pretty good. And that we're focusing on our neighborhoods, we're focusing on improvements, uh, to also Legion Field, but also Vulcan, we're making sure that, uh, Mr. Tyson's pool is gonna be open as soon as possible at Memorial Park. And we wanna make sure that, uh, you know, the baseball and Rickwood Field is there, and we're making improvements in all of the neighborhood parks, um, you know, making sure also that the Skills' parks are included, so... So, anyway, I think everyone working together, I wanna thank the mayor, I wanna thank Mr. Bittes, and the park board, and Mr. Moore, uh, for everyone's diligent work. And like I said, this is the beginning of the process of step one, and making sure, two, that we're able to have all these projects completed, uh, in a very timely, timely way.
Okay, well, that was my second question, I thought I heard you say that all of the projects would be completed in six to nine months?
Well, no, six months to a year, that's our goal, I mean, so that means that...
Well, who's gonna do the work?
Well, we wanna make sure that, you know, that's why I think we're all working together, you know, that's our goal, maybe Mr. Bittes shaking his head, so...
I saw a little of Mr. Bittes' face when you said that.
Well, that's the goal, and we wanna make sure, one, that we've now done our part, and now it's time...
Yeah, you need to have a realistic goal, though, cuz if I'm thinking that my work is gonna be done in six to nine months, and I'm gonna come knocking... Come knocking on your door and say...
I said it.
And you're gonna point at Mr. Bittes.
Anyway, we don't work through it, but I...
But see, I don't want the remaining people in this audience to think that all of the parks are gonna be fixed within the next twelve months.
I said that was our goal.
I, it, have a realistic goal.
Okay.
Now, District Three is first.
But anyway, I think that's just everyone working together to make sure that, that, that these parks are addressing the concerns, are, are addressing for the citizens of Birmingham, so...
Does that address everything, Counselor Hoyt?
Just wanted really to commend the chairman, uh, I know this is not an easy task, by many, by any means of imagination. But, but I think it's one that is thoughtful and inclusive, and, uh, and it really speaks to the work of, uh, of his committee. And so I just wanted to commend him, commend the, uh, the mayor's office, but working with, uh, Councilmember Parker. And this Abbott, you would know this best, uh, than, than most, that, you know, a lot of times, when you build it, you know, the architect get to dreaming and get to drawing, and he just gets all, you know, this, oh man, this, this is the work, this, put this here. And the contractor said, it ain't worth a flip, because the architect, all he does is draw, but he don't tell you how to get done. And a lot of times, the contractor had to make adjustments, and so, Mr. Parker, I'm giving you a pass, because, you know, you got to, you know, dream big, so that's, you know, we appreciate that. But we do know that realistically, uh, you know, not the way things move, and it would move that quite quickly, but, uh, but I think that's gonna be a concerted effort to do so. So I appreciate that, and appreciate you all's work. Uh, Mr. Moore, I know you done changed it more than you really wanted to, but we glad that you did, and you were, uh, amenable to some of the changes. And I think it's a good product, and good, and I think when we work like this on most projects, I think we can get the progress of everybody. So that is a compliment, so thank you all so much.
Alright, Counselor, who was it, was it Tyson that you asked? Okay, Counselor Skills?
Thank you, Mr. President, for recognizing me, I'm so grateful. Uh, let me just say that, uh, this counselor is truly happy. My predecessor, uh, Mr. Joel Montgomery, would always say it's about bringing the meat and potatoes home to your district. So I'm very happy, uh, to say that Mr. Parker heard my cry, that cry was gonna turn into something else if he didn't acknowledge my cry. But nevertheless, I wanna thank my council members, who also, I don't know what's happening with this sound, but, but I can talk loud, uh, loudly. Uh, but I do wanna thank, uh, everyone on this council sincerely, because two of my parks, one which is one of the most widely used parks in the district, uh, was not included. That was Tom Bradford Park, and, uh, we needed some more money for Grace Park, so we can stop having, uh, the toilet sitting in the middle of, of a ballpark where our children practice baseball, okay? So I am so excited, uh, and I wanna say thank you to this council, uh, for standing with me, Mr. President for standing with me, Mr. Chair, uh, for making the necessary adjustments. And I'm gonna make sure the folk know in District One, uh, that our request was a... request was obliged, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, so dearly, I just look forward to the work being completed, everything we asked for is nothing new, uh, these are things that we already asked, from the first bond, we just want to see it completed finally, and I'm like Counselor Tyson, uh, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to seeing some of our park improvements in short order, and I will be so grateful, I'm going to make sure I do a robo-call to Good Folks District One, Mr. Mayor came to the rescue, how they doing? So thank you, Mr. President, and I'm ready to vote.
Mr. President?
Uh, Counselor Hoyt?
Before we take a vote, uh, you didn't thank me, I, 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 uh-
Do you want me to thank you, Hoyt?
Well, I think you need to, because I said, Parker, please shut up, okay? And so he said, he said he was obliged, but, uh-
Well, guess what, Hoyt, I'm a, I'm a do even better, I don't worry about it, but I'm a do even better, so I want to thank Counselor Hoyt from the bottom of my heart, and nothing like having a big teddy bear on the council that, please shut up, and y'all know how to shut up, just give me some money, just give me some money, Mr. President, and, and thank you, thank you, Counselor Hoyt, I couldn't have made it without you, by the same Marvin Saff, you'll be having that tonight, too.
I love you.
Oh, Lord, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, um, one thing, Counselor Parker, before we vote on it, we just need to make sure that, that we have the council members' individual meetings with, uh, the park board so that we can go over, whether it's the park board or the mayor's office or Mr. Bittes, but to have the meeting so that we can go over the schedule for when these different, uh, parks are scheduled to be, um, when they're scheduled to have, to have the work done, so we'll, I'm saying that for the record, because we do need to know that, whether it's, um, you know-
And to that point, Mr. President, but also, uh, I think the management fees are like four hundred and some thousand, that'll be some incentive, uh, for them to complete those projects, complete them on time, and, uh, because I just believe that, that's going to help us, and much is going to be predicated on how well he manages all of these projects.
Uh, so, you got that, Counselor Parker?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yeah, you got that, Counselor Parker?
I do, I'm, I'm, yes.
Counselor Tyson?
You know, the project manager, is it the same project manager that we can, uh, for Cooper Green, and not, not this, um-
Speaking to the microphone, Ms.-
Not the, uh-
Just fire it closer to you.
What's that guy named, not the, the, the second guy, but the first, is he the first same people, not the little short, dark-skinned again, that's the second guy?
That's Matt.
That's Steel City Service, that's the one that's doing-
Now, he did, he did a good job, but that first group, the one that gave us their poison grass, what, what group that was, Mr. Pat?
Are we doing Steel Cities?
We gonna use them, okay, good.
All right.
Mr. President, I do have a question.
Counselor Scales?
Speaking of project manager, uh, is that included, well, first of all, is the contract for the project managers going to be brought before the council? I mean, you got to hear me out, I want to make sure that that's brought before the council, we've been talking about these project managers and having one, uh, included, and, and that they need to be coming before the council and making a report, so is that, is that language going to be, well, first of all, is it going to be brought before the council, the contracts, it, I'm sure it has to be in order for us to have an expenditure, uh, but, but will that be included, Mr. President, that lang- I hear you shaking your head, Mr., Mr. Abbott, but I'm talking about, I want to know if that's in the contract. The project manager and, and what their duty will be to this council needs to be in there, I thought we talked about it.
Mr. Mayor, do you have someone from your staff that can answer that?
Counselor, can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You know, the, the, the first phase of this is, you know, we just got this information, and the funding is approved, so we have to set up these funds, in the budget for us to be able to access these funds. The next step for this is to go ahead and, uh, I'll work with the mayor on identifying a project manager for this category, if you remember, the first bond issue, we had several project managers doing different projects, in the first bond issue, in the park category, we were using Volker to do the project management on the bond projects for the parks, and we were sending reports every month to the, to the council office, that, that gives an update on every project in the bond category, every month, uh, to the council and to the, to, to the mayor's office, so we're going to be doing the same thing, we haven't talked to the mayor's office yet about who we're going to hire this time, but we're going to talk about that with the mayor soon, so we can identify our project manager. The, the, the other, the other, the other, uh, steps on this council is that I need to sit down with the park board and really clearly identify, discover the work for each of the parks, there's an overlap in different, uh, type of work, like, like you're saying, uh, soft surface, in different parks, we can, can put all that together in one project, and bid it out at one time, so we're trying to look at some efficiencies as far as delivering this project as quickly as possible, and that would be with the help of the project manager, but we also have to hire engineers and architects to begin designing these projects, depending on scope of work, we may have to have architect, we may have to have engineer, we may have to have plumbing engineers, electric engineers, depends what the scope is, so as soon as I get with the park board and define each project's scope, then we can identify what kind of services we're going to need, we provide the proposals to the council to approve these contracts, before we can even proceed with the project, so as soon as we get these proposals from these arts engineers, we're going to send them to the council to approve, before they even start any work on these projects, and that will start then the design phase project, which will kind of take us, depending on the scope of work, you know, three months, two months, six months, depends on the, on, on the complexity of the project, and then, of course, we have to bid and, 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 and build, so the next step for me to do is to get with the park board, scope out each project, and start getting proposals to design these projects, as soon as we get those, we send those to the council to approve the contracts.
Go ahead.
So then my question would be, we're, we're in the fifth month of basically going, excuse me, we're in the fourth month going into the fifth month of this year, technically we have about seven months left, so when would our citizens be able to recognize these implementations of improvement, park improvements, realistically, I heard, uh, Abbott, uh, asked a very good question, but I, I still want to get a definite answer on the record, will, will these parks be in, in, in the condition in which we're passing today, let's say by June of next year, which would be more than twelve months?
Counselor, several of those will be completed by then, some will be going under construction, depends on the size of the project, and what Counselor, uh, Austin has said about the schedule, as soon as we get a project manager on, under contract, as soon as we know what the scope of work is, we're going to lay out all that on a schedule, from start to finish, and then we can show you exactly which projects are going to start, when they're going to start, when they're going to finish.
So what predetermines the list, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was asking, what predetermines the list then, I mean, is it the scope of work being a lot more than the other, or what predetermines what parks fall in the list of priorities? And then that's my last question, Mr. President.
All these projects are going to be done at the same time, so we're going to get proposals for every project on that list, and submit to the council for every project, okay, and then we're going to start working on designs, some will finish sooner than others because they're just simpler, some require additional work, additional time for us to finish, I don't know that answer, which one's going to finish first, which one's going to finish second, right now, but we're going to provide the information to you, along with all the proposals we're going to get from these designers and engineers, so you'll have a big picture when we hire these designers to know when the project is going to start, and when it's going to finish, and they're going to be all in, on one schedule, showing every part on that list.
And one other thing I'll add, um, Mr. Bittes, the mayor, is, you know, these, what we're doing tonight is just appropriating the money to the specific categories, because until they have money to work with, they can't really do anything anyway, and so we've got, all we're doing today is appropriating the money, we haven't approved the actual scope of work, that's not before us yet, uh, the only thing that's before us right now is just appropriating the money, so basically, they know now they can have the go-ahead to go and start working on the projects that we've approved in this list, but, uh, I know that you all will come back to us, once we start actually doing the work, there will be more items that we will have to vote on relative to these different parks.
Every, every project here, Counselor, is that, when we hire an architect to this work, they are, it's going to have to come back to the council to approve the contract, part of the contract, we're going to include a schedule that shows when the project is going, when it's going to end, or, or, or best guess, you know, based on the scope of work, and then as we go along, like we did last time, we're going to provide monthly reports that shows where we are with these projects.
Thank you, I think what Counselor Scales is saying, if, since she's District One, that's the first one, she wants hers done first, okay, we're ready to vote. Counselor Parker? Turn your microphone. There it is on. Thank you, Counselor Parker, thank you for your leadership, Counselor Parker, and, Mr. President, let's move forward with approving the funding for these projects, thank you. All right, um, let's move, uh, we need to make a motion to accept the amendment.
Second.
All right, that amendment, the amended resolution is, uh, placed before us, we're ready to vote on the item as amendment.
Counselor Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Hoyt?
And, and before, we're voting on both items.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Counselor Hoyt, yes.
Counselor Lundey?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor member Rafferty?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Roberson?
Aye.
Counselor member Scales?
Yes.
Counselor member Tyson? President Austin?
Yes, that item passes unanimously, good work, Counselor Parker, next item should be item thirty-four, call it item thirty-four and thirty-five, Mr. Clerk.
Item thirty-four, in order to submit the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June-
Think your microphone is dead.
For the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, by transferring three hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and one dollars and seventy-seven cents from HABD repayment, and four thousand, seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents from Seven Springs Infrastructure, and appropriating should be three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and five cents to residential infrastructure support, item thirty-five, in order to further mint the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, by transferring two thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents from Tuxedo Court Hope Six redevelopment, one hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents from Ransay McCormick Building, and three hundred thousand dollars from New Street Housing, and appropriate four hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents to residential infrastructure support.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second. Counselor Tyson?
Now, where, um, um, where is this money going to?
We can't hear you.
Where is this money going to, I know they say it's to build, uh, infrastructure, but what community, is it, is it pinpointed yet?
No, no, the communities have not been identified yet. Did you get your question answered, Ms. President? All right, do we have any other, anybody else want to speak to this item, ready to vote on, on these two items, thirty-four and thirty-five?
Counselor member Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor member Hoyt?
I'm standing.
Counselor member Lundey?
Yes.
Counselor member Parker?
Yes.
Counselor member Rafferty?
Yes.
President Pro Tim Roberson? Counselor member Scales?
Yes.
Counselor member Tyson? President Austin?
Yes, that item passes, one abstention from Counselor Hoyt, all right, next item should be item thirty, uh, thirty-seven?
Uh, item thirty-seven, request to be withdrawn by the mayor.
Call up item thirty-eight.
Item thirty-eight, in order to further mint the general fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, by transferring eighty-two thousand dollars from non-departmental housing for the mentally ill, and appropriating eighty-two thousand dollars to North Birmingham environmental.
And then item forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty.
Item forty-eight, a resolution approving the agreement with Naomi Gordon, Birmingham, for a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and a mountain not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to provide professional consulting services related to the North Birmingham EPA cleanup and restoration project, through planning, execution, and implementation services to support EPA's community outreach, develop strategic plans, and support cleanup initiatives, educate the public in understanding and decision-making processes, provide additional representation to District Four by addressing public input before the EPA partner with EPA representatives to pursue community restoration funding from Superfund Site, Kitten Global Initiative, and other environmental foundations authorized by the executive agreement on behalf of the city, item forty-nine, a resolution approving the agreement with Erica Lyles, New York, New York, for a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and a mountain not to exceed twenty thousand dollars to provide professional consulting services to support EPA's community outreach and cleanup efforts, act as liaison between EPA and city, and the city establish and maintain lines of communication between EPA, city, community, and all stakeholders related to North Birmingham cleanup and Caraway Hospital project, seek funding sources in the proposed scope of work, authorized by the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, item fifty, a resolution approving the agreement with Scotty McLean in Alabaster, Alabama, for a term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, and a mountain not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars to provide professional consulting services to facilitate the flow of information between EPA and the city as an outreach liaison to educate citizens, with the community and EPA channels through practical education outreach, education efforts will include workshops, presentations, and other materials to promote the understanding of reducing toxic emissions in environments in a variety of audiences and communities, as well as middle and high school children, and authorized by the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, we have a mover and a second?
Yeah, I move approval of all these items, but I still have-
Abbott, Hoyt, Counselor Abbott?
Okay, now, I don't know whose idea, who thinks it's a good idea to take money from the mentally ill for their housing, but Spock Point South is chock-a-block with the mentally ill wandering around, panhandling, and doing all kinds of other strange things, I know that there is a program called the Summit Program that tries to get those mentally ill people off the street and into housing, I will not vote to take the money for housing for the mentally ill to give it to anything, because this is a serious issue in Birmingham that we apparently are not doing such a great, um, you know, job of dealing with, so whoever came up with this scheme, um, I'd like to discuss it with you privately, but I will not vote for that, and for those consultants, we have paid a hundred and forty thousand to one of them, a hundred and ten thousand to another, and fifty-five thousand for another, they need to bring us a written report, each one of them, and they need to show up and tell us what they've been accomplishing with all this taxpayer money that we're giving, and I know Mr. Parker can get them to do that, because it's in their contracts, that they will do it if we ask, so these are just some things, we need to find a new source for this money besides the mentally ill, and, uh, and then we need to get some, some transparency on what these folks are doing to earn this money.
All right, do we have a motion?
I made it, he submitted.
So, but do you, that, that was the main motion, do you have a motion, because we can send them to budget finance?
Okay, well, my motion is that we find a new funding source, and the second motion, or part of that motion, would be that we require reports on what has been accomplished, what has been done by the consultants, and have them come and answer our questions, like, we want to see their faces.
And refer it to budget finance.
And refer it to budget finance, to do all that.
To do all that, and we have another budget finance meeting? Second, I'm in, all right.
Mr. President?
Second, yes, Counselor Hoyt, Hoyt, you're passing.
I, I would think that they've already been to budget finance, could we just do it committee of the whole?
And all the councils? We could be there, too, so we'll just say, then, I'll, you amend your motion to committee all.
Yeah, any committee.
Second, all right, and we'll just, we can have a special call, and so we don't have to wait to the end of the month to do it, we just coordinated with Counselor Parker about when they're going to come and all of, yeah, we have one tomorrow, okay, there you go, all right, we're ready to vote, Ms. Clerk?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Counselor Scales?
Okay, so in committee of the whole, I agree with Counselor Abbott, uh, I think even Counselor Tyson mentioned about her concern about the mentally ill, so we join you in that, uh, but, so we're asking for these consultants to come- Uh, but, so we're asking for these consultants to come. I know Mr. Parker had a report that he was passing out yesterday. Are they coming to read what he provided, or what, what are, what are we expecting during this committee of the whole, exactly?
What I'm expecting is a report written by each one of these consultants that tells what they did, when they did it, what they, what the result was, so that we know that that money has been utilized for what they were hired to do. Hopefully, they know what they were hired to do, and they're supposed to be dealing with EPA, so I'm sure they can tell us what the next projects coming to Birmingham are, because we know the soil remediation is being done by EPA, but they've been doing work since then on something.
So can I?
Problem is, I don't know what. So they need to write us reports and say, this is what I did, this is the date I did, this is who I met with, and this is what the result was.
Mr. President, so then my last question would be, uh, the, what is the funding sources? It looks like it's coming out of the general fund, is that right, Mr. President? What, what is the funding source to pay for these three consultants? We already know about, uh, the, the EPA component and the mentally ill, in terms of that being appropriation for that.
I think the eighty-two thousand was the other portion to make that funding that he needs to, to give these contracts, is that correct, Council Parker?
No, what I'm saying, Mr. President, is for the consultants, I see the budget and it gives the account number.
It's line item budget, which, which line item? North Birmingham Environmental?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I wanted to get clarity on, because I wanted to know, is this the budget that they're talking about, the eighty-two thousand dollars? I, I, hold on, Mr. Parker, I'm trying to get an understanding.
Chad, you know that?
What, what is this account these consultants?
Chad, oh, there's Mr. Parker right there.
It's in, it's in the two thousand sixteen budget that we're currently in.
She's asking what specific line item? It's the line item for North Birmingham Environmental.
Uh, it's a non-departmental item called housing for the mentally ill.
That's where the money's coming from, but it's being transferred to the North Birmingham Environmental line.
So are you saying that the eighty-two thousand dollars, in addition to the consultant's fees, are coming all out of the mentally ill appropriation?
No, the eighty-two thousand dollars is coming out of mentally ill.
Right.
Yes, that's what is being proposed, and then it's being transferred to the North Birmingham Environmental line item that's already been in there, and that is what will be used to pay these, the balance of these contracts. Is that correct? Yes, sir. Okay. So it's eighty-two thousand coming from mentally ill, and, I'm sorry to say it like this, but I'm just saying that's what is being proposed, and it's going to pay these consultants.
Well, Mr. President, then I, I will say this before we even take this up in committee of the whole, in one phrase, how heartless can you get? I, that's, that's why I'm trying to make sure that I get a clear understanding, uh, because it seemed like it was going from one budget to another budget to pay somebody else. So I wanted to make sure that I'm getting that on the record, because I actually thought it was eighty-two thousand dollars in addition to the consultants. But I, I think that you can't get no more worse than that, that you're gonna take from the mentally ill to pay three consultants and one that don't even live in Birmingham. Okay, thank you, Mr. President.
So right now, the motion is before us to have the report. Oh, go ahead, Councilor Hoyt.
Thank you so much. Well, I'm, I'm not gonna bait the source of the money, I think it speaks for itself, but I would.
You speak in favor?
But I would, uh, think that, uh, it would be prudent of me, and transparent of me, to say that I've seen all these persons working in some capacity, because I've been a part of some of the sorcerers that have been held in respect to the EPA. So I, I have to get prudence to that, because I've attended the meetings, I've gone, um, to DC, I've gone to Atlanta, and, and, and sought either one of, if not all of these persons in some capacity. So I just want to shed a little counsel just for pleasure.
Mr. Pro Tim?
And, uh, just like Councilor Hoyt, uh, in our visit to Atlanta with the EPA, EPA and the Subregional Director, uh, it's evident that some work is being done. Neighborhood presidents and citizens within our communities have also attended those meetings and been educated regarding environmental concerns that we have in the city of Birmingham. Uh, I just want to state that, uh, in support of what Councilor Hoyt, uh, has said also, uh, so some work is being done, uh, but it's the liberty and privilege of the council to determine how we move forward, so, thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Motion is before us to refer this to committee of the whole. We'll set up a special call and try to find a different funding source, so we're gonna take the money from the mentally ill. Ready to vote, Mr. Clerk?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item, those items will be referred to committee of the whole. Next item, Mr. Clerk, should be forty-two.
Item forty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Lightfoot Franklin and White for their assistance for legal matters, and amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for a term ending June thirty, two thousand sixteen.
All right, we have a mover and a second?
I move approval.
Second. Abbott, Roberson, I know that, uh, this was one of the items that we discussed yesterday, and, um, it, it last, yesterday evening in budget at EDB and F, and I believe that we will have to go into executive session if we're going to discuss what they're doing specifically. So if we're gonna do that, we probably need to just lay it on the table to the end of the meeting, and that way, we'll, we can go ahead and finish, uh, with the rest of the items that are on the agenda, which not, but a few left. Um, so we'll just lay that on the table, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President? I, I got a question related to the item.
Go ahead.
I mean, is there a sense of time sensitivity to this item, that it has to be discussed?
Okay, all right. So let's move to lay it on the table.
Southern.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Uh, all opposed?
All right, that item be laid on the table. Item forty-seven?
Item forty-seven, page sixteen, a resolution approving the agreement with Bloomberg Group Incorporated, Montgomery, Alabama, for a term not to exceed one year, and amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to provide representation and assistance to the city in connection with governmental issues, legislation, proposed legislation, and other matters before the Alabama legislature and other government-related services for the benefit of the city of Birmingham, and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Move the item?
Second.
All right, I move that we refer this to EDB and F.
Yes.
All right.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
One no vote, that item be referred to EDB and F. Uh, next item, Mr. Clerk, should be item seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, and the addendum item eighty-two.
Item seventy-five, a resolution approving the following expense account, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand twenty-four dollars and forty-two cents, December the ninth through twelve, two thousand fifteen, to attend fifth anniversary benefit gala, gala and world heritage celebration, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents, December the fifteenth through seventeen, two thousand fifteen, to attending EPA meeting, congressional meetings, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, January the fifteenth through the seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA meeting, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and nine cents, January the seventeenth and the eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, to attend foundation partners, William Parker Councilor, City Council, New York, New York, one thousand three hundred and eighty, one eighty dollars and seventy-six cents, January the sixth and the seventh, two thousand sixteen, to attend foundation partners meeting, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-seven cents, January thirty-first, first, February the first, two thousand sixteen, to attend congressional meeting, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-eight cents, February the sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA intricacy working groups meeting, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents, March the seventh through the ninth, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA meetings, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents, March the twenty-first through the twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, to attend congressional EPA meetings. Item seventy-six, a resolution approving the following expense account, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents, February the fifth through the seventh, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA meeting, William Parker Councilor, City Council, Washington DC, one thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents, March the third through the third, two thousand sixteen, to attend EPA meetings. Item seventy-seven, a resolution approving the following advanced expense account, Renee Kemp Roten, administrative assistant to the mayor, mayor's office, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, one thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars, made in eighteen through twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, to attend American Institute of Architects. Item seventy-eight, a resolution approving the following advanced expense account, Chad Mitchell, Deputy Administrator, City Council, Toronto, Canada, two thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cents, March the twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, to attend GFOA Annual Conference. What we got here? Addendum item eighty-two, a resolution approving the following advanced expense account, Ricky Lee, Mayor's Office Assistant, Birmingham Crossplex, Indianapolis, Indiana, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, March the third through the fifth, two thousand sixteen, to attend NCA's proposing. I, I just read it.
You move the items? Second, but we have two more to add to the addendum that were left off. AJ Holster from nine ninety-three sixty-eight to attend the same, um, Birmingham Crossplex, Indianapolis, Indiana, uh, Pastor Preston, Preston Kirk, nine ninety-three sixty-eight for the same event, and Fay Oaks, nine ninety-three sixty-eight for the same event in Indianapolis, Indiana. We have a mover and a second, we're ready to vote on those items.
Yep.
Council Parker?
Council Abbott?
No.
Uh, Councilor, Councilmember Hoyt? Councilmember Lundey? Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rafferty? Uh, Council, Pro Tim Roberson?
Aye.
Councilmember Skiles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyson? President Austin?
Yes, those items pass, one no vote, Councilor Abbott. Um, all right, we have, we, that concludes our council agenda. We have one item that's left that would, uh, that we've had to lay on the table so that we can go into executive session. You all are welcome to stay, probably will be, we will have to come back and adjourn the meeting. We will have announcements by some of the council members, uh, about upcoming events and things in their individual districts, but you're welcome to leave if you want to, um, or you can stay, we'll be in executive session for about five to ten minutes at the most, and then we'll, uh, we will come back. So we have a, a determination from the Law Department that this requires us to go into executive session?
Yes, Council, Alabama, meetings act allows the council to convene an executive session to discuss, uh, pending litigation, options for pending litigation, and the proposed executive session meets that criteria.
All right, do we have a mover and a second to go into executive session?
I move that we go into an executive session.
Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundey?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker? Councilmember Rafferty? President Pro Tim Roberson?
Aye.
Councilmember Skiles? Councilmember Tyson? President Austin?
Yes, we'll reconvene this meeting and call it a chair.
You noted it.
Long sound goes there.
You didn't, you didn't speak with anybody?
Yeah, are they not gonna, are they wrapping up?
Yeah, they're about to begin, I don't know how much longer before they wrap it up.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like they've, I think they're ready to get over.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lundey?
Yes.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rafferty?
Right.
President Pro Tim Roberson?
Sleeping.
Councilmember Skiles?
Cold.
Councilmember Tyson? President Austin?
President? All right, the item, um, is back before us, let's move to, well, it's already on the table. We have a motion and a second?
I move approval.
Wait, do we take, will we take it up from the table?
Uh, let's, it's, we're, that was moving to take it off the table.
We have to take it off the table and approve it.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, we have moved, moved the item?
I move the item.
Abbott, Roberson? Just do all of it.
Councilmember Abbott?
Just do all of it.
Aye.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes. Uh, we're down to old and new business, if we have some.
I move we dispense with old and new business.
Do you move to adjourn it? I want to, I want to, second.
Mr. President?
Hold on, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Council Skiles has an announcement.
Okay.
No, I, I actually have a question for you, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Are you gonna go ahead and, uh, talk about other things?
Yeah.
You are in this meeting?
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
We, we can dispense, all I can say is I'm just grateful for District One, and, and Councilor Hoyt, and make sure, I hope this group go down right, that he gonna get a good hug from it. Uh, but, uh, we have, we had two neighborhood meetings that took place tonight, uh, and I'll make sure that we update them on it, and, Mr. President, thank you for your leadership, and that's it, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Pro Tim?
Real quickly, uh, Winona Lady Dragons Championship Parade will take place tomorrow at noon, uh, downtown Birmingham, so come out and support Winona Lady Dragons for their third, uh, Class V-